All right, I'd like to call the meeting of the village board to order at 7:35 PM. Has this meeting been publicly noticed?
The meeting has been properly noticed and posted according to law.
Excellent, and we have all trustees present this evening. Item four, special order of business, we have none this evening. Moving on to item five, consent agenda items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Kudo, seconded by trustee Lynn, any discussion?
I'd like to please pull item A, item B, and item D.
Item.
Apple B, Boyd D, David.
A, B, D? Certainly. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exception of 5A, 5B, and 5D? You say all in favor? Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to item six, items removed from the consent agenda, 5A, presentation of accounts, December 4th, 2023, trustee Stokebrand.
Thank you, I have two questions and one, I'm sorry, I meant to ask Leanne about this earlier in another.
Closer to the mic.
In another email. I noticed about $10,000 for fencing, and it says reimbursement, deep public works fencing? And if you want to get back to me another time, because I didn't warn you about this at all.
That's related to the police chase incident through our yard.
Oh, that's right.
A number of weeks ago, and up to $10,000 is reimbursable through our property insurance.
So they do, we didn't subrogate that?
There was a claim filed for our insurance, I'm not sure what the claims adjuster, the discussions were on the other end with whomever, even if the person was identified, I'm not sure.
Okay, all right, and then the other, thank you, Leanne. The other question I had was under library professional fee. I just want to confirm, because I know we talked about this last time, but I didn't see it specifically itemized as legal, and that's my question. Because I, my concern about transparency with the legal fees here, we're, we have our attorney, and now they have their attorney, is my understanding. And I just want to make sure that our attorney fees will come up under our accounts, and theirs will come under theirs. The thing, I just, it doesn't say legal fees anywhere on this line item, so if someone's looking through this, I would rather have an indication that it's a legal fee, because I think it's, it's something that is important in the village right now, and we just need to have oversight and accountability and transparency. If it's just a coding thing, that's what, that's my ask.
The, the account which legal fees are charged in the, in the library is the library professional services. At present, that is the only expense that's running through that account. So when, and I appreciate you bringing this up now, I was actually going to update it under the scope of my report, but this is the first of several that you'll see upcoming running through this line item. So those are expenses for the library for legal services associated with some of the matters of which we've been engaged upon with the library. Those invoices are, are coded to that line item.
So I should just look, is there, can we just put legal somewhere in this, in this accounting process?
Maybe not in the line item, but we can see if there's a descriptor, be happy to do that. If not, I'm also tracking it and providing, I'm going to be providing you guys with an update on that quarterly.
And I'm sure you will, I'm just thinking if, if a resident wants to go through the accounts payable.
Sure.
They should be able to look under library and see what is going for that. And so that's my question, because Von Briesen and Roper SC, most people would not maybe know that that's a law firm. So if there's any way we could make that more clear in the documentation, that's my ask.
I'll just put legal fees ahead of the, the title of the firm.
Great. Okay, thank you. I move then to approve the presentation of accounts dated December 4, 2023.
Second.
Oh, motion by trustee Stoke, Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Kudo, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. 5B, consider regular village board meeting minutes November 20th, 2023, trustee Stokebrand.
Thank you. I had been in touch with Toya, we're going to take special meeting out of the heading. And then the other thing, I think there was a vote that was missed, it was item H under, sorry, new business, letter H, consider an appointment to the library board. We just had the zero, but not the six, I believe. And then just to correct, the candidate forum was today from 5 to 6. That's under C, village managers report, it says 6 to 6:30. And then I would move to approve the village board meeting minutes of November 20th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Kudo, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That leaves us with 5D, consider one-year audit agreement extension, trustee Stokebrand.
I was just concerned that we're not going out for an RFP on this. That's the one most valuable tool we have for oversight and accountability of finances. And so I was just wondering, you know, it says due to the transition of the finance director. I'm guessing though, this is a pretty boilerplate RFP.
Yes, we do have an RFP for this, for this item, because it's been RFP'd before.
And so is there no way to do it yet for 2024?
No, because they actually start their audit work this month.
That's unfortunate.
Right, motion to approve? Yep, moved, so moved.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Moore Baldoff, seconded by trustee Ursink, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, 6-1. Moving on to public hearings, we don't have any this evening. Item eight, citizens to be heard, this item is for matters not on the agenda. Is there anyone present this evening who would like to be heard? We don't have any members of the public here in person, is there anyone in the virtual platform that would like to be heard? All right, seeing none, we will close citizen to be heard and move on to item nine, which is new business. 9A, consider application of 2016 ash removal policy to 2025 Lake Drive reconstruction. We have a memo in our materials presented by Director Buchlik. At this time, I would open it up for a motion or technical questions. Trustee Kudo?
I'm sorry, I hit my hand on my water bottle.
Oh.
I had nothing.
Trustee Ursink?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
So I move that the existing ash replacement program be applied to North Lake Drive in advance of the scheduled 2025 Wisconsin Department of Transportation project, and that the 2024 removals be funded through the 2024 capital budget ash removal program allocation.
Second. All right, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Moore Baldoff, any discussion? Trustee Stokebrand?
I just want to be clear, so let's say Capital Drive wasn't, I'm sorry, let's say Lake Drive was not going to be reconstructed. The money would be used to do trees throughout the village as per the plan, but because we're in this situation, and the state won't do anything with us with trees, we're going to designate that 20,000 to 30,000 of that regular 75 to be used throughout the whole village, we're going to say, this year, we're going to target definitely those trees on Lake Drive, and so some other areas that might have had theirs taken out will not, because you only have so much.
That's what we're asking you to confirm this evening.
Okay. So the total taken out over the village will not change, it's just that we're going to do the Lake Drive.
That's correct.
I would just like to say that I'm really glad that we came to this consideration this evening, because I think that there was a misunderstanding early on, so I'm glad that we can take this opportunity to remove the trees. So I'm not, I can't recall exactly what happened and how we got there, but I think trustee Stokebrand, you asked a question that kind of led to a series of questions to mean, to, for us to identify that there was a misunderstanding, so I just want to say thank you. And with that, I would like to ask, all those in favor, say aye.
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 I think there was a.
Yeah, I made a motion.
Right. Yeah, thank you. So all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Item 9B, consider ordinance 3060, parking prohibited at Downer and Edgewood. This comes to us from the Public Works Committee meeting, is it, or was it, okay, wasn't public safety. Do you want to give us, and it is with a recommendation to approve?
Yep, it was a unanimous recommendation, there's a couple of parking spots around utilities and utility boxes that just made a lot of sense to, it created no parking, no parking by, so it was a unanimous decision between, between our group.
Would you like to make a motion to approve?
I would love to. So I move that ordinance 3060 and ordinance prohibiting parking on East Edgewood Avenue and North Downer Avenue be recommended for full village board consideration.
Second.
Motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Lynn, any discussion?
Um, yes, my only. It just seems like that's the same.
Yeah.
Motion that we did.
After reading that, it's like.
Yeah, that's the same motion, motion we used in committee, so I think that just, I move approval.
I move, yeah.
Of the ordinance, seems like it should be the motion.
Yeah, sorry, after I read that, I, I'm the same way, I'm like, we're, we're going to be here, it's coming right back to you guys, so. So.
Friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment. I move approval of ordinance 3060 and ordinance prohibiting parking on East Edgewood Avenue and North Downer Avenue.
Second.
Okay, so, um, all right, this will be a roll call vote. Trustee Kudo?
Yes.
President McCaig?
Aye.
Trustee Stokebrand?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
Trustee Moore Baldoff?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Moving on to 9D, consider historic preserve, oh no, 9C, consider resolution 2023-26, a resolution amending the village weights and measures fee within the village fee schedule. This is something that comes to us every year, memo is in our packet, the material's presented, is there, are there any questions or a motion to approve?
I can make a motion. I move to approve resolution 2023-26, a resolution amending the village weights and measures fee within the village fee schedule.
Second.
Motion by trustee Moore Baldoff, seconded by trustee Ursink, any discussion?
Just to clarify that it'll be a reduction in revenue for the village as a whole ongoing, okay.
Trustee Stokebrand?
So, would we not want to pass this along, why are, why are we taking this on? Why would we not pass it along? Am I missing something here?
Is there any clarification that staff would like to make?
If the state is charging us more, then why are we not charging the people who apply for the license, why don't, why don't we pass that fee along?
Um, so if I could explain, though the fee is increased, the amount of days are decreased because they're now doing it every other year, the inspections.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So because they're doing it every other year, it makes sense to just, rather than trying to charge them every other year, to just break it down in a smaller increment yearly, that'll still equal the every other year fee, if that makes sense.
So over two years, we're flush? That, when I'm. Because they're going to get half as much one year and half as much the next year, so over a two-year period, we're flush? The same amount of money, okay.
Mm-hmm, because of the, the increase in the amount, but the decrease in the days that they do.
That they charge.
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for clarification. Any other discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote as well. We did, trustee Moore Baldoff, seconded by trustee Ursink. Um, trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Moore Baldoff?
Yes.
Trustee Kudo?
Aye.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee Stokebrand?
Aye.
President McCaig?
Yes.
Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Moving on to 9D, consider historic preservation survey for the university project. This will be coming to us from you?
Yes, and I am hoping that Sam Kaufman's on the line, Sam, could you raise your hand if you're in virtual attendance, or I'm not sure, there was someone we had to mute earlier on, I don't see him. On the call. I know. Sam, if you're the phone number on the call, could you unmute yourself? Okay. Well, I don't believe that he is on the call at this time, so I am happy to take any comments or observations I have on the draft survey, which has been prepared, and I can relay them onto Sam.
Wait, trustee Stokebrand?
I was just going to say, an option could be to defer, I mean, the deadline, he proposed in here that we have this, I believe, through Janu, so I like, it looked like he was going to have a January survey, what if we just delay it? And I did have a question, I thought we didn't, we wanted to take out something about a historic commission, because we don't have staff, but there was still something that talked about a reference to a historic commission.
Correct, we could.
The commission under block C, block 13, become a certified local government, first bullet point says, established by ordinance a qualified historic preservation commission, and I thought that staff decided we didn't have the staff.
So noted, and if you elect to defer, I'm happy to take any comments in the interim to get him started, if you'd like to submit those in writing or provide those, but if not, we can always request that he come back, if available, at the December 18th meeting.
That would be my preference, I think that's a good idea from trustee Stokebrand.
Then if we could just get a motion to that effect? Or is this just an update?
Just didn't need to require him.
Okay. And we will defer.
Do we have to vote on deferring?
Yeah, it just.
I'll, I'll move to defer.
Okay.
Uh, new business, item D, to the next village board meeting.
Second.
Uh, motion by trustee Kudo, seconded by trustee Lynn, any discussion? I, I support deferring, I'll just make one comment off the top of my head that, to give them a heads up, that it looks like it'll take more than 10 minutes with just the reading, so we can talk about it more. There's a lot of technical stuff in here, it's probably unavoidable. But otherwise, I support defer, deferral. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. I believe that was our last item of new business. So moving on to reports of village officials, 10A, village president. I was happy to do the Santa rampage ride for the first time on Saturday, I encourage everyone to try it next year, it's super, super fun, there were even kids along, just pure joy, so highly recommend. I also did the tree lighting at Winterfest, the turnout was amazing, the businesses were packed with families and Santa children, and just the whole business district was packed. And finally, I filed my papers for getting on the spring ballot for reelection to village president today. And I think that concludes. 10B, village trustees provide committee updates as either a liaison or a member. Any updates, trustee Stokebrand?
Unfortunately, there was no one at the candidate forum today, I'm not sure, called it. Or the school board, or the village.
Trustee Ursink?
Or the fair housing meeting that was in the basement of the library, so a lot of, a lot of unattended sort of meetings this afternoon, unfortunately. I guess, so Shorewood Chill is an event that we do every year at Lake Bluff, we set up the ice rink, we bring in food, we bring in music, and we try to build it up every year, that has been set for February 3rd, fingers crossed that the weather cooperates this year and we're able to like, make ice and, or, you know, mother nature lets us make ice and maintain ice, but tentatively, right now, we are working on February 3rd to do that. Yeah, so that's, that's exciting, that's all I have.
All right, trustee Kudo?
I have some exciting news for the, for the village board, you're getting chickens, it's coming to you.
Consideration.
So we had a meeting today, after several meetings and lots of dialogue, wanted to thank Bart and his staff, as well as the community residents who participated, there was a lot of back and forth, it's coming to the village board with no recommendation from the committee, so Bart was able to put together an ordinance that probably needs a little bit of tweaking, from my opinion, but, yeah, so you all can enjoy the conversation around chicken coops, and then in your future, so you're welcome.
Glad you guys got a lot of feedback on it.
Oh, nice, it's a scratch, just scratch through it all.
I almost moved to adjourn right there.
Trustee Ursink?
Just wondering if there's anybody online that was here for a recent appointment that we made, whether it be parks or other sort of committees, that, that was approved during the consent agenda, sometimes people miss that. I know we had somebody in our last JP&amp;L meeting that, that kind of hung out through the whole meeting, that was a resident that was just, I think, that had their appointment up this evening, just wanted to let those people know that, that was approved.
Thank you.
During the public safety committee, we heard from the department about automated license plate reader system, that's in, currently in six squads that they would like to activate, they just, basically, this is a system that would automatically pick up a license plate in front of it, seriously dumbing this down, but, and that would then interface with any serious crimes that would be reported through a system, now it's not like expired plate, it's, you know, serious crimes that pop up, that would match with that license, be associated with that license plate thereby, if needed. It was an interesting presentation, and that will be coming for the full board, it's.
Thank you. Any other reports? All right, hearing none, village manager?
No report.
No report? All right, is there, are there any future items of consideration? Trustee Kudo?
Can I ask a question? So, I'm not on DPW, and I believe I was on the board for two years, but has there been a recent conversation about winter parking restrictions in the village, December 1st to March 1st, opposite side of the street parking, I just, I bring it up because there is a such zone across from my house, and with new developments and, and us trying to get more folks into the business district, it just seems kind of silly, and maybe there aren't great reasons, to me, it seems kind of silly to not allow folks to park on the street when there's no snow, so I'm wondering if it's been a conversation as of late, or if there's a really great reason that I just don't know anything about.
It has not been a conversation as of late, we just went through a huge sort of parking and, you know, analysis, and I think, you know, that, that was a part of that, that conversation, it does come down to snow removal, and it's hard to gauge, you know, what kind of year it's going to be, are we going to get a ton of snow starting in, in December, or are we not going to get any snow at all, and I think having those blanket sort of dates just, just helps alleviate the confusion there, you know, but in the long run, it's really just to help with snow removal. Make sure that the, the village can sort of operate, I mean, if you've seen Milwaukee or the east side, some of the, but when both streets kind of get plowed in, it can be an absolute nightmare.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, and I, I may not remember correctly, but I thought Milwaukee got rid of a lot of theirs and moved it to a snow emergency situation.
They did recently.
Is there a future item here?
I mean, we could, if you'd like to bring it up for a future item consideration, I'd.
Can I just interject at one point, we actually covered this in detail within the transportation and parking analysis, and then inventoried all of our streets in comparison with the recommended advisement from the analysis that came through, then inventoried all of those, then went, I mean, I'm happy to talk it through with you, but we actually just got done with the process of cleaning up our code and establishing that those areas that actually have the restriction, it, it should be in place in those areas, based typically with roadway, but I'm, I'm happy to talk.
No, I'll go back through.
For a long, for a length of about.
It was a lengthy conversation, and, you know, and it took, it took a lot of time to get that going through, so I would assume if you did make this future, this, this, this future item a consideration, it probably.
No, I'll look at the study, and then I'll.
Perfect.
I'll come back and.
I'll send it out in the Friday update and kind of earmark the page.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Trustee Stokebrand?
I do think it all came up in the discussion with the overnight parking liberate, you know, making the overnight parking more liberal, but I do think that it could be a concern because that was before a 39-unit apartment building was built.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and the same thing on Stow and Capital, so I do think that situation may have changed, and if, I don't look forward personally to another parking discussion, but it could be, it could be necessary.
Appreciate it, so, yes, trustee Moore Baldoff?
I just, I have an item too, unrelated to that, but I can wait until all of that conversation is done.
Yeah, I don't think we can discuss it more, because there's no future item to be voted upon.
Great. Uh, one thing that I wanted to look at is kind of revisiting our policies around Airbnbs and the like, I have heard from a couple of residents that they feel like there are some issues potentially with Airbnbs in the village, so I just wanted to find out when, you know, kind of the last time that came up for us, and make sure that we're kind of on top of having the right kind of regulations in place as a village, you know, we talk a lot about wanting to make sure we have more affordable housing, and one issue that we see in a number of communities across the country is, you know, if investors come in and buy up a lot of homes to use as Airbnbs, that limits the stock of affordable housing for residents, so I just wanted to have a, kind of have a fresh look at what our policies are.
If I could ask the village manager, because that did come to our attention, or we had some memo, so maybe you could pull those back items together, similar to the previous item, circulate it, and then if there is.
Great.
A formal future, item to consider, bring that back.
Great.
Thank you. Any other future items? Yes, trustee Stokebrand?
I do think that we were limited by the state on that, from the, something from Rebecca, that we really have our hands tied, but that's, don't trust my memory. I would like to discuss amending the village code to consider an ordinance change that would allow the transporting of others on self-propelled cycles. So like people who have, there, someone down the street from me has a bicycle that is specifically built for the, to take their children on the back of the bicycle, but our village code currently prohibits being, anyone except the person operating the bicycle from being on a bicycle. And so it would be a very small code change that I think Nathan has already looked at, and so I would like to have that brought up as an item, I know parks and public spaces has already weighed in on it also.
Just a point of clarification, or point of information on, on this, my understanding is that park in public spaces has now suggested a complete rewriting of this chapter of the ordinance, which we don't, typically with something of that level of an undertaking, we put through the initiatives process, so that's a pause for concern because it would devote and deter other staff projects that are in queue from being handled in that manner. My understanding is that there's no enforcement of this particular regulation, that it's a code cleanup item, and so I just want to be.
My understanding is that there's no enforcement of this particular regulation, um, that it's a code cleanup item, and so I just want to be, um, conscientious that, um, we're being thoughtful with the workloads that are already established, and then, and just with the exception of, you know, like rewriting entire chapters versus, um, modifying an ordinance, which currently is not, and has been communicated by the police chief, is not an issue nor an item of enforcement.
But I think that's the misconception is, they do not want, the parks and public spaces did not advocate rewriting the entire chapter, they want like one word removed, it's extremely small.
Okay.
It's not a big code rewrite.
Yeah, so my understanding was that they were rewriting the chapter, so I'm not supportive of that, if it's a modification of one word, but then I'd request that this board hold on other ordinance amendments, because there's costs in terms of updating it. So if we're going to do code changes, I'd suggest that those get bundled and then planned for accordingly.
Basically, like the code, the code change today for parking that came up and was passed in four weeks.
Yeah, if I may, I, I think there might have been a misunderstanding someplace along the way, which can happen. And so what I'd like to do is take this opportunity to confer with staff to identify, I understand what you're presenting, and I understand what staff was under the impression of from the committee. And so figure out how to bring this back.
I think it's important that if we're going to say that there's costs, we, we be transparent, what does it cost, like we just passed an ordinance
I understand.
change tonight, that went through the whole village process in like a month.
Oh.
And so if costs are prohibitive, let's know what the costs are.
Understood. And noted.
So how are we going to resolve this?
As I said, mm-hmm. I'm going to, um, does anyone want to summarize for me?
I think we're going to look into what code changes are even being suggested, and, and clarify that, and then see where this would fit in, um, if it is something worth pursuing. I'm okay looking at this at, you know, again at another time, but I don't think it's like an emergency.
And it is, it does seem like there's some this, um, some misunderstanding, um, so that's what I just want to clarify, I understand exactly what you're asking, trustee Stoke Brand, and and what information you want included, and I will bring that to you.
To the body.
Yes. Trustee Ursink?
No, I've got nothing.
Thank you.
I'm going to move to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, move to adjourn by trustee Kudo, seconded by trustee Ursink, any discussion? Any objection? We are now adjourned at 8:07.